I'd like to call the September 8th, 2021 Board Meeting to Order. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Long, will you lead us in the pledge? Board members, are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Board President Report. I just have a few things to share this evening. Since we met three weeks ago, a lot has happened. I had the opportunity to welcome over 170 new teachers to the district on behalf of the board. We opened our doors to in-person full-time instruction at all levels. Our sports teams have started their seasons. While we're excited to be steps ahead of where we were last school year, we recognize there's still a lot of work to do as a district and as a community to navigate forward in a COVID world. I would like at this time to address statements that were made at the last board meeting and in emails to the board that our district, more specifically Dr. Schuler, has not been working collaboratively with the DuPage County Health Department. Since the last meeting, Mr. Long, Dr. Schuler, and myself met with Karen Ayella and Chris Hoff of the DuPage County Health Department on 8:20. I asked two main questions for clarification. The first question. Has our district and Dr. Schuler been partnering with the DuPage County Health Department during the COVID pandemic? Karen Ayella stated she would characterize our district and Dr. Schuler as a strong partner. He regularly participates in meetings advocating on behalf of the community, and he does not hesitate to reach out even in off-hours. In addition, some of our community has been critical of the district's looking at data through the MIT tool. Actually, the DuPage County Health Department sent the MIT tool to the IDPH and CDC because both agencies are looking for more tools to better understand this virus. DuPage County Health Department has not dismissed this tool. They actually want to learn more about it. The second question I asked was to affirm the timeline before and after our July 14th meeting. Karen Ayella confirmed that the timeline and information that Jeff has shared in the past with the board and our community was correct. A couple of highlights on that timeline I would like to share. On July 9th, the date that IDPH and ISBE came out affirming the first set of CDC guidance, DuPage County was in blue. On the Monday before our meeting, DuPage County Health Department met with the superintendents at this meeting. They affirmed layer mitigations, local control based on COVID activity, and vaccine status. At this meeting, DuPage County Health Department said they would not be giving direct feedback to the schools on reopening plans. We had our meeting two days later on the 14th. On the 15th was when DuPage County Health Department started receiving communication from our community. Therefore, the statements made to our district that our district and superintendent have not been working with the DuPage County Health Department are false. As a means to avoid the spread of miscommunication, the board encourages community members to contact their school administrator for any building-related questions and the district administration for any district-related questions. Please let's do our part to stop the spread of miscommunication. A few reminders. We welcome hearing from the community during the public comment portion of the meeting. However, please understand this meeting is not designed for the board and the community to engage in back-and-forth dialogue. While the meeting is held in public, the purpose of the meeting is for the board to do business on behalf of the district. In other words, we hold a board meeting in a public setting. On occasion, board members may gather thoughts on agenda items through prepared statements to share with their fellow board members in the administration. Those thoughts may be for the purpose of sharing information they find relevant to a topic, offer opinion on a topic, or to ask clarifying questions for the administration on that topic. However, when the board speaks to the community, we speak as one voice through the actions and decisions made at this table through our votes. As evident at our meeting last month, we recognize our community has very strong convictions in regard to COVID mitigations. As I said at the last meeting, everyone tonight needs to feel safe, physically and emotionally in this room, and comfortable speaking tonight if they choose. For that reason, we have again brought in additional staff to monitor this expectation and address behavior that does not represent the expectations we have for visitors through Board Policy 8.30. In addition, face coverings are required throughout the duration of the meeting per Board Policy 4.182 and the executive order that is in place for schools. Please be courteous and kind respecting the decorum of our meeting. I urge everyone in attendance. Let District 200 be a leader in collaboration, a leader in empathy, and a leader in modeling for children in this community that those with differing opinions can learn from one another and work to find the best learning options on their behalf. Tonight, please respectfully listen. Do not engage in comments that divide us even further. Let people speak without audience comments, applauses, applause, or gestures so not to diminish another's thoughts or act as a means to intimidate. Please let's work together tonight for our students. Dr. Schuler, you have a report?
I do. Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree, members of the board. Just a couple of things that I wanted to share tonight under the superintendent report as was just mentioned in the opening statement. We're about two and a half weeks into school. About halfway through that third week, it has been great to see students in our buildings. We've acknowledged, and we will continue to throughout the year, that our plans are going to have to adjust. Our plans are going to have to be agile. But as we gathered all of our principals this week to review where we were in the first couple of weeks of school, it has in fact been a joy to see students in our buildings, to see the amount of student activity that's going on. I've seen plans recently for homecoming week for a lot of the activities that are coming up that I do know that we cherish, we want to be able to do safely, but it's been great to see that continue to happen. A quick note and a thank you to the Student Excellence Foundation. I noted that their grant window for our educators is open. So it's a great opportunity for District 200 staff, if they have a particular idea or need in their classroom, to look to the Student Excellence Foundation for funding through their grant. Wanted to quickly mention, we've had a few questions or comments from community members about the activity bus that we added at the high school this year. So that bus is getting started. We have had some challenges, especially in transportation with drivers. Well, we have drivers for all of our regular routes. Our bus company, actually all of our transportation providers have indicated they do have a significant shortage in drivers. Our regular transportation provider is onboarding as we speak, a new group of drivers that are going to actually help them to actually be able to get some of their office staff off of routes and back into their offices. And that's going to allow us a little more flexibility moving forward around both our activity routes and our routes that are running activities, sports, et cetera. It's been a challenge to get them there on time, but our partner continues to work hard on our behalf, but we do have to be a bit patient in that space. Wanted to mention or share with the board, as I've shared with you, we've got, we had some updated guidance that came from the Illinois State Board of Education around how we support students when they are out, either on isolation or quarantine. There's some strong recommendations on how we support that. Just a reminder, in District 200, our plan at the beginning of this year is to do that through a combination of some designated teachers we've hired specifically for that purpose by level in conjunction with direct supports from our classroom staff with work. We believe that to be the best plan moving into the year. But again, as always, we will monitor through feedback how that plan is going and make any adjustments if necessary. We started our S.H.I.E.L.D. testing as well last week in our second week of school. Just as a reminder, that S.H.I.E.L.D. testing is likely going to be expanded moving forward as we're utilizing that support for the new executive order that requires either vaccination or weekly testing for all staff within the district. And so again, good to have S.H.I.E.L.D. up and running. It is, the difference in S.H.I.E.L.D. versus Safeguard, you might remember last year when we were doing saliva testing through Safeguard, all of the samples were collected off-site, brought to school. S.H.I.E.L.D., they are collected onsite through the third-party partner that S.H.I.E.L.D. works with to assist us with that collection at our schools. And so again, as they worked through the first week, there were some adjustments that they made to be able to kind of move the process along in some of our buildings, and I'm confident that's going to continue to happen. And then finally, just want to mention that we've had a lot of conversation about the test-to-stay option through DuPage County. As we get a little further into the agenda tonight, we've got an update on our metrics. Included in our metrics, of course, are our quarantine numbers, which we've shared with the board throughout the first couple of weeks of the school year. We are anxious to see that test-to-stay protocol. I don't have a new update for the board other than what I have shared, which is DuPage County has indicated we are getting that protocol, but I do not still have a specific timeline on at what point we are likely to see it. But I have continued to share our quarantine numbers with the DuPage County Health Department so that they're aware of and they understand the impact of not having that protocol available to us, and we do hope to have that very soon. So no new update in that. And looking down my list to see if I've missed anything else. Again, I guess I already mentioned the requirement for mandatory vaccine or testing for our employees. On Friday, we were given a two-week extension on that deadline, I think based on some concerns that were being shared statewide on the infrastructure in place. And so we are actively working on gathering the vaccine information and getting our S.H.I.E.L.D. testing set up for those that will test weekly. So progress continuing to be made there. And I think that's all I've got under my report for tonight.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Okay, moving on to public comment. In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment signup sheet was made available until 7:00 PM at the meeting site. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened to two minutes to provide the maximum number of people and opportunity to speak. We will be doing that this evening. To preserve confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments and raise his hand at the two-minute mark. We ask you to stop at that time. Please be factual and courteous and do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to board or the staff. I will be reading two names. The first name will be up, and the second one will be up thereafter. First is Ron McGowan, second is Jenna Tattinall.
Good evening. I'm Ron, a District 200 resident and a dad of three students. I'd rather spend my two minutes tonight sharing about how much my kids have enjoyed being back in school and how amazing their teachers are. But instead, I'm compelled to speak on the disinformation of last month's meeting. A board member spent seven minutes and 47 seconds misleading this board and this community by claiming that mask-wearing could hinder a kid's neurological pathways and equated masking to leaving a baby strapped in a car seat. They used a 2010 neuropsychology article that was not only academically dishonest but professionally negligent. The 2010 abstract has more to say about mutant mice, rodents, and ferrets than it does about kids in masks. On July the 12th of 2021, the American Academy of Neurology exposed this type of destructive disinformation with their full support of the AMA's Ongoing Mask Up Campaign to reduce the spread of COVID-19 and to help save lives. This board member continued the disinformation by falsely claiming, quote, "that COVID-19 is less likely to be harmful than the seasonal flu." This myth directly contradicts global, national, state, and local science and medical experts. Peddling these lies is dangerous and dishonest, especially when it comes from a board member. District 200 does not need a different take on masking. We need administration and board members to step up and stop the spread of this disinformation. Board members, your silence implies your consent or your agreement. We can't come back up to say stop the disinformation. So we're asking you, please stop it and continue making good decisions that will keep all of our kids safe and in school. Thank you.
Jenna Tattinall, next after her is Ethan Spade.
Our goal is to keep schools open, and we know that masks, distancing, and quarantines stop the spread of COVID and keep schools open. We begged this administration and board for required masking, and we waited until the governor overrode you. We begged principals to distance kids at lunch, and only after two weeks and extensive quarantines did the administration concede. Now we ask in light of the new wave of quarantine resistance in our community that you continue to quarantine students according to DuPage County Department Health Guidelines to protect our kids and to keep schools open. However, the many students at home in quarantine and their teachers deserve better guidance and resources for at-home learning. There were 56 students quarantined in one day at my kid's school, Pleasant Hill. Can you imagine how many more it would be if masks were optional? My husband and I learned on curriculum night that teachers had just that day received direction from this administration on teaching quarantine students. Half of our bus and a quarter of my second graders' class were already six days into quarantine. My neighbor's daughter received nearly nothing from her teacher for the 10 days she was out and only received it upon request. There was plenty of time to prepare for this inevitability. Support our teachers and provide resources to make learning successful, even for students in quarantine and isolation. If this group of elected and appointed officials wants to regain our community's trust, you must fully and vocally support public health measures. You must pivot toward transparency. Give us the number of students quarantined, not the maximum in a day, in a week. And you must demonstrably better support your teaching staff for students that are suffering outside of school. Thank you.
Next up is Ethan Spade, and after that is Michelle Graham.
Hello, my name is Ethan Spade. I'm currently a sophomore at Wheaton North High School. I've attended District 200 schools since I was a kindergartner at Sandberg Elementary School. I'm here today to speak about multiple items that include bullying, suicide, and the social and emotional well-being of students, or some may refer to this as part of the vision 2022. I was in complete dismay when I heard parents at the last board meeting talk about how masks are causing suicide. My uncle died by suicide 25 years ago, and I've almost lost my sister to the same thing in previous years. Did you know that death by suicide has been the third-leading cause of death for ages 1 to 24 since 2017 before COVID? As a society, we need to stop the stigma that comes with mental illness so we can get the kids the help that they need. Additionally, last board meeting, there was a parent that said, quote, "The kids also know that this is a very diverse community that respects everybody. Maybe you guys don't, maybe you guys have a problem with it, but on the football field, on the wrestling mat, in the show choirs, or anywhere else, the kids respect each other." I wish this were true, that students respected each other for who they are, but unfortunately, it's not. I have so many friends in the LGBTQ+ community that have been called homophobic slurs on school campus, and the administration has said nothing to the oppressor, no punishment. I also know multiple friends that are people of color that have been called the "ensler" on campus. This time, the administration thought it was a good idea to pass around a talking stick for everyone to share their perspective, everyone being the oppressor, my friend that got called the "ensler," and the witnesses. There's been a new policy put in place, and in summary, it says that any verbal harassment to any student or staff is prohibited. And the consequences for not following these claim to be very serious. I hope that the school keeps up with this policy because calling someone a slur is unacceptable. I'm not going to pretend like I've experienced being called a slur or that I know the amount of pain that that can cause an individual. I thought it was common sense, that calling people slurs is something no human being should do. Last school year when this happened to my friend, I was infuriated that the school did not punish the oppressor for calling her the "ensler." This cannot happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Graham, and after that, Katie Best.
Good evening, Dr. Schuler, school board members, and stakeholders. I'm Michelle Graham, a community member and proud mom of three amazing CUSD 200 students. At the last board meeting, I warned us of those who will try to find loopholes around the mask mandate. And I hate to be in "I told you so," but the actions of some community members at the last board meeting grossly demonstrated exactly what I was talking about. I'm glad to see communication has happened about wearing masks and that lunchroom spacing is increasing to six feet, but what I would like to see are plans of what will happen when the numbers of positive cases, as predicted, will increase. Specifically, what numbers per classroom, building, and/or district will determine if we can safely remain open, if we need to go remote, and what numbers are needed to safely remove mitigation protocols. Also, at the last board meeting, a board member enlightened us with information about masks that seemed to align with her personal beliefs. Some do believe masks make it difficult for others to read emotional and nonverbal cues. However, please know it has been well documented that most expressive, nonverbal that there is are the eyebrows. I would list all the credible sources, but I'm limited to two minutes. So when the eyebrows are combined with other nonverbal, such as posture and tone, students and staff can read and interpret these cues as long as their mask doesn't cover their entire face. In the grand scheme of things, the amount of time elementary students are wearing a mask at school within an entire calendar year is 11%. And when just focusing on the waking hours, 21%. So that means elementary students can spend 79% to 89% of their time during a calendar year unmasked, participating in safe opportunities outside of school, being able to read unmasked facial expressions. I do hope this provides some perspective and that in the future, information shared from the board is free from biases and thoroughly researched before being presented. Thank you.
Next up is Katie Best, and then Allison Williams.
Good evening. I'm here today to talk about democracy and April's election. In April's election, 40,881 voters voted for the school board. There were seven candidates who ran to safely reopen the district. Of those candidates, they garnered 24,144 votes. That's nearly 60%. If the safety candidates had run only four candidates, all four of the seats would have gone to the safety, to those candidates. I tell you this to remind you of who voted you and how we want our voices to be represented. Board members Hanlon, Paulson, and Yaboah, I voted for you. My mom voted for you. My dad voted for you. My sister voted for you. And my brother-in-law voted for you. And we voted for you because you ran on safely reopening the schools. You did an outstanding job last year, even going against the grain. And I applaud the district for that. And I thought it was very courageous and turned out to be an excellent decision. I hope that in the future, you will remember who voted for you and whose voice you represent. I think it should be pointed out that not everybody can come to an evening meeting. There are parents who work two and three jobs, evening shifts, divorced parents. It is not democracy to listen to an angry mob that shows up. It is democracy to listen to the voters who show up at the polls. Thank you for your time. I know it's a dangerous time to be in politics and representing the voters, and I truly appreciate the time that you give to our community and to our students.
Thank you. Next up is Allison Williams, and then Jill Caballero.
Hello, I live in the community, and I have a son at an elementary school right now. I'm coming here today with you guys to tell you that I'm actually going back and talking about the mask issue because I was not able to make it here last year. So I have 15 years of experience in the classroom as well as a master's degree in educational leadership. Because I was not able to come last time, I would like to discuss the issue for the mask from July. As educational institutions, it is our duty, okay, to make sure we are standing behind experts, facts, and supporting science. It is our duty to educate not only the students in our classroom, but the community. Dr. Schuler had an opportunity at the July board meeting. He could have taken that opportunity like Dr. Rich, superintendent of Windfield, and explained the importance of masks, the science behind masks, educate the community on how they work. He had a PowerPoint slide at his board meeting that explained how they work and that the practice protects the other people around them, not the wearer. Instead, Dr. Schuler decided to go against every health expert agency out there with a masks optional policy. As educators, one of our main learning standards is to teach students how to find reliable sources of information. When Dr. Schuler chose masks optional, he went against experts and against reliable resources. He contradicted the most important learning standard that we hope all high school students graduate with. And for that fact alone, we should all question his ability to lead this institution. Lastly, I'd like to address Mr. Long's statement at the last board meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you said that you went-
Okay, next up, I'm sorry, thank you. Next up is Jill Caballero, and then Brian Campan.
Good evening. I'm a mom of two children in District 200, both too young to be vaccinated. Public education is vitally important. It ensures that all in our communities have access and opportunity. And look, I know that leading a community of families during a worldwide pandemic is difficult. I don't think anyone here expects you to do it perfectly, but we do need you to plan for what we know and to communicate real-time information to our families. The pandemic began a year and a half ago. We know that elementary and middle schools both have populations of students ineligible to be vaccinated. We know the Delta variant is more easily spread than previous variants. And we know that we have more students in every building in our district than we had last year. So long before the beginning of the school year, our district could have and should have been implementing a facts-based plan of action for the ongoing pandemic. Thanks to our governor, we have the basic safety measure of universal masking. But we need you, our local school district, to be proactive and to think ahead to plan for what we know is reality. The lack of facts-based planning affects our teachers who have been asked to do a tremendously difficult task with huge changes and often little notice. It affects our students who suffer the consequences. We also need regular, accurate, timely COVID-related information communicated to our families. It's to the district's benefit to be transparent. It's to the district's benefit to be transparent. We all know COVID is here. Tell us the real-time facts in our schools. We receive this type of information from school when there's a student in our grade level identified with strep or lice. Why not communicate real-time information to each grade that is affected with COVID? Communicating clearly and truthfully with your families will help re-instill trust. It also allows us families to better support our schools. Thank you.
Next up is Brian Campen, and then Margaret Vatova.
Hi, I'm Brian Campen. I'm a father of two, one unvaccinated eight-year-old girl who attends Madison. I just want to start by saying I think that it's important for all of us to remember, and I just had this insight coming up here, but that all of us, whether it's the board, the superintendent, everyone back here, whoever they are, but especially the parents of grade schoolers who are unvaccinated and really, to me, the heroes of this entire thing, more than anyone in this room, that we're all speaking from a place of trauma. Whether we like it or not, every one of us is dealing with trauma of some kind far greater than we're usually facing. I've heard board members sow disinformation in this room the last month. I've heard board members air personal grievances about criticism coming from traumatized parents, and I'm sure it's hard to hear the criticism that we're leveling. It may be hard to hear, but these parents, all of them, no matter what their political persuasion, they're facing life and death choices and issues for their grade school children until this is over. Every grade school parent in this room faces these choices every day. We hired you, and we have you here to move fast and make the right decisions and be flexible and follow the experts. Because this is a life and death issue for my child, I'm not going away until I truly believe that you are more on top of it than any one of us is. So it came to my attention that local parents are receiving data about COVID numbers 72 hours prior to Wednesday's publication. And then, some of that information was plugged into Facebook messaging for political purposes. Now, that's not a problem for the board, but the problem is you all have to make a choice about when that information is disseminated. If you want to disseminate it every day, oh my God, I would be so happy if you disseminated it every day on the fly. But to do it individually with parents over the phone, when 10,000-plus parents of grade school children are waiting for that data, not only does it make sense, but it's an affront to everyone who can't pick up the phone and just dial and find out what the information is. But it's also an affront because I don't see, maybe I'm wrong, but I didn't see any public information about calling the superintendent or anybody else. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Margaret Vatova, and then Rosario Wettenberg.
Hi, my name is Margaret Votava. I'm a district parent. I have a CUSD, CUSD 200 graduate and a freshman at South. And I was here for the July, August, and now the September meetings, so I saw the spectacle that ensued both in July and August. And my high school daughter attended with me in the one in August. And she's partly here again, and I consider this a whole exercise in civics and civility and how to handle, how adults should handle conflicts and stuff like that. And I would like to say I'm extremely grateful to the board for, I'm sure that you were equally surprised by what happened in July and August as I was. And you were probably caught off guard in July, and I want to say that I appreciate the mitigation steps that you've taken to try and step things back down. And honestly, I'm incredibly grateful for that. The other thing that I want to say, and I'm going to say that I'm sorry to repeat myself from what I said in July, and I appreciate the opportunity that you allow me to speak, that the other, I don't know, 50 people in the room and 100 people that could come in July and August were here too, to talk about what our views on COVID were and are. And I would say that my personal views and the rooms of these people are not the things that should be letting you affect what your decisions are. Really, it's the public health experts, it's the CDC, it's the Illinois Department of Health and DuPage County Health that should be influencing you on what your decisions are and what that policy should be. Thank you.
Next up is Rosario, and then after that is Ellen Christine Tarde.
Good evening, CUSD board members and superintendent. During the previous Board of Education meeting, some parents against mask choice attacked our superintendent, asking for his removal. I would like to emphasize, if the superintendent's position is put at risk, you, Board of Education, must as well resign. Because you were all in agreement with the mask choice policy. You were not being threatened. You agreed to allow choice for the parents on the July 2021 Board of Education meeting. Another point that I would like to mention is the apathetic, unscientific, non-transparent approach that the DuPage County Health Department has taken in regards to COVID-19 data availability. Making the school administration follow ill advice. A pathetic, because DuPage County Health Department has almost solely emphasized vaccines and mask-wearing as the most useful mitigation, when it is just as important to mention proper handwashing, sanitizing, sneezing etiquette, and a big emphasis must be applied to proper ventilation systems in our schools. We see daily reminders on DCHD social media to vaccinate and to mask, but rarely we see any other mitigations that are just as useful and do not create further medical and psychological harm to our students. I have never heard from DuPage County Health Department make any suggestions on installing carbon dioxide monitors at school to help identify airflow, where airflow is limited, and viruses may more easily spread either. Unscientific, because DuPage County Health Department, IDPH, and the CDC have all decided to not follow verifiable science that shows that children can be at school safely, wearing a mask only during passing periods for our middle schoolers. No mask for elementary and mask-wearing for 12 and up.
Next up is Ellen Christine, and then Nicholas Hill.
Hey, my name is Christine Tandy, and I've been a D200 parent for 13 years. First, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for all your hours and effort and heart that you have put into our kids and our school over the last year and a half in particular. And thank you too for maintaining a long-term focus. The last meeting was not a whole lot of fun, but I loved hearing you talk about your long-term plan for the district, that you're able to walk and chew gum at the same time and remembering what was most important, and that's getting through this and moving on. Now, I did want to mention that, since we have heard a lot about the other side, my kids are doing just fine wearing masks. It's a non-issue in our house, whether he played soccer, whether they were seniors in graduation or whatever. They are fine, and so are all of their friends. For the great majority of kids, they are doing as well as we are. So if we go forward and support this, they will be fine. I do want to say though, as a final thought, and I really am reiterating something I said last time. I support the mandate and the current CDC and local health department recommendations. And I'll support science-driven decisions going forward, including a more nuanced approach to masking if and when that is appropriate. I would like to see that D200 though default to Illinois and DuPage Health Department recommendations pass to do something different. And please, if you do want to do something different, do a better job than last time in terms of explaining it to us. I trust that you do have science behind you. That's not always clear what that science is to the community. So thank you.
Next up is Nicholas Hill, and then Amelia Votava.
Hello. So my name is Nicholas Hill, and I'm a sophomore at South. I've received questions throughout my life asking whether glasses are annoying or disruptive, and I would directly correlate this to the use of masks. They may seem annoying, but throughout the day, you simply forget that you were wearing one, and it's self-conscious, and you simply get used to it. To me and all people I've talked to, they completely agree. I've not heard a single objective or complaint about masks in these first few weeks at South, and I simply feel parents are making a deal out of nothing. The most direct and reliable sources are the accounts of people at school, and I can assure you that through what I've witnessed, people are doing fine. I am very grateful for the requirement of masks as it makes me feel safe and comfortable throughout the day. Masks truly make my learning experience more enjoyable and successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Amelia Votava, and then Shannon Limjoko.
Hi, I'm Amelia, and I'm a freshman at Wheaton Memorial South. I haven't really planned anything, but I just really appreciate wearing masks. It makes me feel a lot safer, just as Nick said. And I am, even though it's really, really hard in PE to breathe, kind of, but you get used to it, and it's not that big of a deal. There's really no issues. And I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon, and then after that is Charles Dubose.
Hi, I'm Shannon Limjoko. I'm a parent of two elementary school students in the district. I came here to tell you about something that happened to my 10-year-old daughter last week. When I picked her up from school, she started crying in the car. I asked her what happened. She told me that at lunch that day, a classmate of hers had said something really awful about gay people, which I won't repeat here. And she was heartbroken because she knew this was harmful. We have friends and family who are gay, so she took it really personally. And she was just really hurt. And then, literally that same week, in a community just next door to us, a teacher who had shared through social media that she uses a variety of diverse texts in her classroom, including books about gay rights and Black Lives Matters, really wonderful books. She just gets viciously attacked through a national online campaign to get her fired, and it was just outrageous what is being done to that teacher. So I see that happen, and what happened to my own daughter, what she experienced, and I hear other comments from a small yet vocal minority of individuals in our community who question our equity efforts of our school district. And so tonight, I want to be a voice that tells you, as a parent and as a member of this community, I value diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. And I thank you for the work that you've been doing related to DEI, and I want to urge you to continue to prioritize that work. I see the goals articulated in your Vision 2022 Plan and other documents that talk about hiring diverse staff and professional development around DEI and diversifying curriculum. That is also important. So thank you. And one final thought, the teachers in our district are outstanding, and I hope that the administration and board will support them to the fullest degree possible on this. We cannot let a vocal minority bully our teachers into submission and fear. Teachers have to know without a doubt that they are supported in implementing inclusive classrooms that celebrate diversity. And if our district hasn't already done so, especially after what happened last week, I hope you'll let teachers know that you have their back. Thank you.
Charles is up next, and then after that is Kristin Buck.
Hi, my name is Charles Dubose. My wife and I have lived in Wheaton for 22 years. Both of our children attended District 200 schools, went to college, got advanced degrees, got an excellent education. Unfortunately, I don't believe that District 200 students are getting a good education now. As we all know, last year was disrupted because of the COVID and the remote learning. This year, I had hopes that things would improve. Unfortunately, they have not. About two weeks ago, a child I knew was sent home from middle school because they had been six feet from a positive COVID-tested kid and was sent home without homework. The next day, another kid I knew, same situation, also sent home. While neither of these kids has any sign of the COVID, they're banned from school for 10 days. To make matters worse, the health department has quarantined them. And the quarantine means they got to stay in the yard. If they break quarantine, they can be fined, the parents up to $2,000, and spend a year in jail. Things I'd like to be considered, one would be if kids are contact-tested, at least let them get tested and see if they can go back to school. And, you know, in conclusion, the real question is how many more needless suspensions are there going to be this year? And, you know, we need to get our kids back in school so they can have a future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Buck, and then Judy Huff.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Kristin Buck, and my husband and I have three students in the district, a freshman, a seventh grader, and a fifth grader. My comments tonight are not about masks. We fully support the mask mandate. American students were experiencing widespread mental health distress long before the pandemic took hold. After the sudden transition to online learning in March of 2020, students found themselves abruptly disconnected from their established daily routines, support systems, and sources of security. While stay-at-home orders, quarantines, social distancing, and masks were and continue to be essential, public health tools for curbing the spread of infectious disease, these measures undoubtedly contributed additional psychological distress among children and young adults. Tonight, I'm here to say thank you for providing additional student support positions to our schools. Behavioral and emotional wellness coordinators are both a fitting and timely resource for our students. As I understand it, they were originally added to the high schools and now at the middle school level. For students who are overwhelmed, anxious, dysregulated, or just need a break, for families whose child is dealing with loss or transitioning from a hospital or PHP program back to school, everyone benefits from this additional resource. Job well done. An area that deserves another look is that of staffing guidance counselor positions. If my cursory research from this school district website is correct, the average ratio of high school guidance counselors to students is approximately 1 to 285. That's one guidance counselor serving 285 students. That same ratio on average at the middle school level is 1 to 234. Again, that's one guidance counselor serving an entire grade level, which on average is 234 students.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jody Huff, and then Jeannie Ives.
Hi, I'm Jody Huff. I'm a lifelong resident of Wheaton, and I have two middle schoolers at Edison. I'm not here to talk about my personal experience or my own advanced degrees or credentials tonight because the school district is about every single one of us. I also don't need to explain educational philosophies, curriculum instruction, because each of you sitting right here bring your own experience, your own lifetime, your own children's many of you, and some of you even PhDs. You're sitting where you are, holding the trust of the community because of those. At the last board meeting, a board member shared an article about brain development. It is true, children learn social cues from facial expressions, but not exclusively. They also learn to react to social situations from the adults around them, who model empathy, resilience, understanding, and problem-solving. An example of this would have been the two brave girls who spoke at the last board meeting, saying they don't like to wear masks because they get hot at PE, they get sad because they can't see their friends' faces. Wouldn't you know it, after those young ladies witnessed the adults in this very room, sitting in their seats, carrying on the meeting as planned, they were laughing, smiling, playing up and down the rows, in and out the doors. If they were hot and sad, they must have forgotten. So while wearing a mask might not be ideal for some kids, or some of you here on the board, it is irresponsible and dangerous to use your position here, backed in by your credentials and education or physical therapy to make statements like, and I quote, "Two years for a virus that is probably less likely to permanently be harmful to them than the seasonal flu" is categorically and scientifically false. None of you are M.D.s, experts in epidemiology or infectious disease, pulmonologists or hospitalists who circle inpatient facilities all day. We look to you and do trust you for decisions and education. Just as I would not trust astrophysicist Dr. Neil deGrasse Tyson to be my oncologist, or Bill Gates to perform my mammogram, we need to remember who we can trust.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeannie Ives, and after Jeannie is Harold Lox.
I am speaking on behalf of other parents and the nearly 150 healthy children in our district who have been quarantined. I'm concerned healthy students are being deprived of their right to an in-person education. Parents should know their rights under quarantine. First, a school nurse or administrator has no legal authority to commence or enforce a quarantine. Second, an individual placed under quarantine has a legal right to a written order of quarantine from the local health department. The written order of quarantine must be issued within 24 hours of a verbal notice. Both the verbal order and the written order must come from the DuPage County Health Department. Third, a parent must sign the written quarantine- Third, a parent must sign the written quarantine order to be legal. Without a consenting signature, the health department must seek a court-ordered quarantine within 48 hours. From reports I have received, the district is denying healthy children their right to an in-person education without a legal quarantine order. Under no circumstance should the district exclude healthy children without consent or court order to quarantine. Since nearly one-half of the D-200 students do not perform math or read at grade level, you would think missing school would be a huge concern for this board. And since COVID, new COVID tests are giving false positive results leading to unnecessary quarantines, then the district should allow kids who test negative to return to school immediately. Since the last board meeting, CDC reports on 90,000 children show masks are not effective. And we now know that vaccines do not stop the spread and that natural immunity is better but ignored. COVID isn't going away, and the flu is just as big of a problem for kids. So how long are you going to continue this, and will you quarantine for the flu? I'm hopeful you'll respect the rule of law and protect the rights of our children to the same degree that you have respected and enforced illegal and illogical mask and quarantine mandates. Thank you.
Next up is Harold Longs, and after Harold is Steve Gross.
Good evening, Harold Longs. I am a resident of the district. I'd like to start by saying, I might not agree with everything the board and the administration does, however, I do respect your position in the education system and the hard choices that you need to make that affects all the students. This past week, I did speak to the administration about the lack of preparation of quarantine students. Basically, the homebound students, information that was given to them was poor and needs improvement. They were not, the instructions that were given haven't had any plans set, and I think you guys need to work on some plans, like A, B, and C, what to do with these quarantined students. Like, there are some of the parents before me said that there's a lot of these kids that were sent home had no contact at all with their teachers or getting help or instruction. And the next thing I want to say is, well, Jeff, I guess you got another job besides worrying about educating the kids at school. I guess you gotta start educating the community, and then you got the other half the community who want to get you fired. I find that very interesting. And I just find it also amazing listening to the community and then your comments earlier by Ms. Crabtree about how the community is undermining the administration by complaining and making all kind of false statements to the Board of Health, and they don't realize that actually affects the students by forcing, you know, healthy kids to be quarantined and stuff by, you know, creating all these mandates and so on. I think all these kids need to get back in the classrooms. I wish, you know, the government and agencies could all work together, including the Board of Health and you guys, so we could get as many kids back into class and have less kids out in quarantine. And I don't think this, you know, coronavirus is gonna go away anytime soon, so let's all work together. Thank you.
Next up is, last up is Steve Gross.
Wheaton School Board, I'm Steve Gross, resident of Wheaton, parent of two, granddaughter of Harriet Frazier Snyder, who graduated from Wheaton High School in about 1923. She was a student in Wheaton schools during the Spanish Flu pandemic of 1918. My daughter had surgery at Lurie's Children's Hospital yesterday. This morning, NPR reported healthcare rationing due to COVID outbreaks in Idaho. If things continue in Chicago and get worse, we could have healthcare rationing that would affect my daughter's next surgery. We need to do our part to make sure that there isn't healthcare rationing in our hospitals. We can help by wearing masks as much as possible. On another matter, I have a few questions actually about the budget on something going through for today's motion. I see a monthly AT&amp;T charge of $22,000 for district-manned circuit charges. Can there be more clarification as to what that is? If those are network-related, I hope that we put those in our E-Rate application for this year. Similarly, we have a gaggle.net charge of $35,000 for network monitoring. It wasn't clear if that was monthly or yearly. I assume we also have those in our E-Rate application for 2021. What does gaggle.net cover that our own network traffic monitoring doesn't cover? Gaggle.net, gaggle, excuse me, gaggle.net discusses monitoring of drugs and alcohol, sexually explicit content, violence, self-harm. Does it also track academic dishonesty searches? Does it track the hours students spend on non-academic content on district devices? Its website mentions it has a piece of correlation to digital citizenship. We also pay $26,000 for CSO licenses. CSO is a great way for students to build digital portfolios. What are the perks of using CSO for digital portfolios opposed to using a Google Suite approach, which would leave the content easier for graduating students to transfer to their personal accountants and not have any additional charge? I see a cost of $25,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our public comment for this evening. We move on now to our consent agenda. Acceptance of a gift to Hawthorne Elementary School. Acceptance of gifts from Midwest Educational Furnishings, Inc. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between the city of Naperville, Illinois and community unit School District 200. Approval of COVID-19 emergency contract amendment for school year 2021/2022 with organic life. Approval of annual vendor contracts generating revenue. Approval to submit round one of the fiscal year 2022 school maintenance project grant. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, August 18, 2021, open, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to April 2020 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Any more information, Dr. Schuler?
No additional information.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Okay, hearing that there are no questions and comments, I'd like a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Glanther?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Dr. Yvova?
Yes.
Yes. Now we're on to our policy posting consent agenda. Approval to post revised policy 2.10, school district governance for public review and comment. Approval to post revised policy 2.130, board superintendent relationship for public review and comment. Approval to post revised policy 2.240, board policy development for public review and comment. Approval to post revised policy 2.
Mrs. Crabtree, can you hold for a second? I'm sorry. I need to take a brief recess while we.
We're gonna take a brief recess. We're ready to continue with the policy posting consent agenda. I'm just starting back at the beginning again. These are all for public review and comment. Approval to post policy 2.10, school district governance. Approval to post revised policy 2.130, board superintendent relationship. Approval to post revised policy 2.240, board policy development. Approval to post revised policy 2.30, school district elections. Approval to post revised policy 5.10, equal employment opportunity and minority recruitment. Approval to post board revised policy 6.145, migrant students. Approval to post revised policy 6.160, English learners. Approval to post revised policy 6.235, access to electronic networks. Approval to post revised policy 6.255, assemblies and ceremonies. Approval to post revised policy 6.260, complaints about curriculum instructional materials and programs. Approval to post revised policy 7.280, communicable and chronic infection disease. Approval to post revised 8.90, parent organizations and booster clubs. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda?
Chris, I have a question. So approving to post them, does it mean that we can't come back and revisit some of the language?
Yeah, we.
Correct.
Yes, it'll be posted for a month, and then at the next board meeting, we can.
And we can revisit the language ourselves, okay. Thank you.
Dr. Schuler, any questions or comments?
No additional information. Just want to remind the board that your policy committee went through all of the changes. Most of these are a result of adjustments in school code, legislative changes, a couple through just a five-year review that's done by press, which is your policy subscription service. So your policy committee went through them. We do recommend that they're posted for public review and comment beginning tonight.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Booten?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Ms. Glanther? Yes.
Dr. Yvova? Yes.
Ms. Cracker?
Yes. Okay, we're on to action items. The first one is approval of resolution to adopt the 2021/2022 budget. I see Dr. O'Keefe is walking up to the podium.
Yes, so just reminder to the board, as Dr. O'Keefe is coming up to the podium, this is the third formal step in your budget review process. So the board posted a budget, tenet of budget for public consideration. We held a public hearing at the last meeting to take any feedback on the budget. Again, your finance committee reviewed any feedback, any adjustments to the budget, and so we're here tonight for the last step in the budget approval process. So Dr. O'Keefe, any comments you'd like to share at the front?
Thank you once again, Dr. Schuler, for taking half of my presentation upfront, so I appreciate that. Just a few quick updates on some changes that we made to the budget as a whole compared to the tenet of budget. So there's three different funds that we looked at, the transportation fund, O&M fund, and then the education fund, and I'll go through them backwards. Within the transportation fund, we did have to add our high school activity routes, the costs for those, as they were not planned in the tenet of budget. And then we reduced our supplies and our expected costs for the gas escalator to help offset that and make sure that the transportation fund was still balanced for the year. On the O&M side, just one specific change, we did add Suite 600 that the board approved over at the transition site last month, so we had to add those costs in. And then we moved those, the cost for that specific new space over from the evidence-based funding model out of the Ed Fund, which didn't have a direct negative impact on the Ed Fund. And then the Ed Fund in two different areas, just on the revenue side, as you see, even moving over the $65,000, our final allocation from the state was actually an increase of almost $19,000. So the net difference was just a reduction of $46,000 to the EBF part of the education budget. We did decrease our drivers' ed reimbursement based on updated information from the Illinois State Board of Education. The biggest thing we did was looked at the food service program. So back in July and prior to then, when the board, excuse me, when the budget was being put together, there was not a quite clear understanding of the types of programs we're going to be able to run this year when it came to food service. And we know we provide breakfast and lunch to all students, and that's free for the whole year. But what we had planned on in terms of total units sold through organic life, our third-party vendor partner, was much significantly less than what we actually worked out and anticipated for the school year. So we looked at 375,000 meals and lunches and 125,000 breakfasts in the tenet of budget. We've actually moved those numbers up to 500,000, or half a million lunches, and 150,000 breakfasts, and that's the big significant difference in that increase. On the Title IV side of things, that's a federal grant, so final allocations, we just made adjustments based on that. The other big piece that we actually did, we do receive a lot of Medicaid reimbursement, more than $1 million on an annual basis. That is a reimbursement model that actually comes in a check from the state treasury. So timing related to those revenues are always in arrears, so we don't start seeing money for the prior fiscal year until later in the existing fiscal year. And all we did was align our anticipated revenues with our expected expenditures this year to make sure that if there were any timing issues, it wouldn't have a negative impact on the education fund. And the last piece, from a revenue perspective, just all the final allocations for our EXO grants knocked it up about $83,000. So that's the recap on the revenue side. On the expenditure side within the Ed Fund, no changes to salaries or benefits. We'd increase our legal services set aside by $20,000. We decreased our contractual services, and that's two pieces. So $180,000 of that $414,000 number was just moved into a different category, purchase services, which is two lines down from contractual services, and that's related to specifically IT. And then the difference in what we expected to pay for breakfast and lunch were more than what was actually brought to us and what the board has approved tonight. So the remaining roughly $235,000 of that decrease in contractual services is related to food service. We don't expect to pay as much as we did when we put together the tenet of budget. And a few other small things that we had to add in, liability insurance, you see the $180,000 for the purchase services, small adjustments in our supplies, small adjustments in professional materials, and then a small decrease in our capital equipment. So when you look at our operating budget as a whole, and the operating budget is everything except for debt service and capital projects, we're at $187.4 million. Expenditures are $179.6 million. That leaves us with an operating balance of almost $7.8 million. We are moving 7.2 of that from O&M into the capital fund to fund our projects for next summer, which leaves us with an overall estimated operating surplus of a little bit less than $600,000. Budget is balanced.
Are there any questions or comments for Dr. O'Keefe?
Can you review those meal numbers again? You went pretty fast with the meal.
Sure. So in the tenet of budget, we estimated 375,000 lunches.
Yeah.
We changed that estimate to 500,000 lunches. We estimated 125,000 breakfasts. We changed that to 150,000 breakfasts.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, I just, you know, I've been through a few of these, and congratulations on your first, separating your first budget through.
Thank you.
I think, I think this is our 12th consecutive balanced budget, is that right, Dr. Schuler?
I believe so.
12 years in a row, and I think you've, if I, if I did my math right, you've been at the helm for eight of those. So there's been lots of different school boards, school board members through that. So I just want to commend you for guiding the district over so many years to, you know, be respectful of the taxpayers and delivering a high-quality education for our students and, and operating our school district at or below the state average for so many years. So, you know, in, excuse me, in the current environment, I think that needs to be recognized as well. So thank you for that.
Other questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing no questions or comments, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the final 2021-2022 budget as presented.
Moved.
Is it Mr. Long?
Hanlon.
Oh, Hanlon, I'm sorry. Second?
Second.
Mrs. Booton, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Blatter?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, the budget has been approved. Do we have to sign that now, or do we sign that later?
Do they need to sign that right, right?
Yes, correct.
Or do they sign it after the meeting?
After the meeting, is that okay?
After the meeting, yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Next is the approval of the Vision 2020-22 goal plans. Dr. Schuler?
Yep, so we, at the last Board of Education meeting, we reviewed with the board, actually this has taken place over the last two meetings, that we reviewed your potential goal plans for this year. Again, this came out of your strategic plan that is coming to a close at the end of this year. So we went through each of these goal plans at your last meeting, heard some feedback from the board. What we're going to highlight for you this evening are just the updates to those plans, not go back through them again in their entirety. So I'm just going to walk down through each of the goal plans and let the respective administrative lead just highlight any changes. And then, again, we're happy to entertain any final questions before we make a motion that you approve them. So we'll start first with student services. Dr. Slagi?
Thanks, Dr. Schuler. The, the plan as presented was the, this is the same plan that was presented as the last time, but I do want to make note that our SEL board committee met last week. We took an in-depth dive of the entire plan and actually broke out, looked at, looked at many of our assessments and looked closely at it. So no changes to the presented plan, but also had an opportunity to take a deep dive with our SEL board committee last week.
Great, thank you. Education services, Mrs. Murphy?
Good evening. After our conversation at the last Board of Education meeting, we made one addition that is under the curriculum program development and implementation, and that is high school finals. We'll be working with our high school team to study our current structure and types of assessments used. So that's the addition on the educational services page.
Administrative services is Dr. Kyle, who's back in the back. Again, you've got the addition of the board committee that's overseeing that work, and the human resource policy committee also will just highlight that we did add specifically some of the targets that had been identified through our equity plan within the district, looking specifically at our workforce in District 200. We did identify some continued work in our discipline disproportionality data, which is a need that we had identified for the board previously, and so we just wanted to make sure that those were reflected in the department work plan in addition to in our equity plan in the district. Innovation and technology?
Yes, thank you. You'll notice that the board committee, teaching and learning, there will be plenty of opportunity for collaboration on portion of graduate work and continuation of the FIT learning environment. Also, you'll notice under, under the specific goals, the last bullet point has been broken down into a little bit more detail about what types of cybersecurity measures our district is undertaking this year, including some staff-facing data protection methods, some protection monitoring that includes penetration testing, and some education campaigns on important cyber incidents, including ransomware phishing and spoofing, and then the development of a cyber incident response plan.
Okay, business services?
No changes to the plan as a whole. We just look forward to bringing the five-year projections to the board in January.
And then finally, in the community engagement plan, no, no shift or adjustment in this one, just the note that we had presented this to the plan a couple of, to the board a couple of meetings ago as a part of your community engagement plan and just documented it in the same format as your other plans. So I think that's all that we have for you in the way of updates. We'll entertain any final questions. Otherwise, we would recommend a motion to approve these plans so we can continue work.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Sure, I'll go. I think you've done a really good job of coordinating all the comments and incorporating them from the last meeting. I still think 37 bullet points feels a little like a lot, and a lot of it is really what I think is the day-to-day operation of the district, but when you break it down in department, by department, it's really like five or six items. So I think that's quite a bit more manageable. The other thing that's, that I always look for when it's attached to goals is how are we going to measure success? So we probably need to also, you know, make reference to the district dashboard, which we've been doing, and comes back to the board, I think typically three or four times a year, to look at how we're doing in some of those measures. And then, and then finally, the, I think, big picture, there's a very clear connection between a lot of what's going on in here with an, excuse me, an overarching theme of our strategic vision, which we have to go through towards the end of this year. So I think we need to recognize that probably one of the biggest goals this year is to develop Vision 2026. And so a lot of this work that's embedded in these goals will get us to that point. So that's probably one of the most important things we do this year that's not on this list. So I think, I think it's a good job, it's a continuation of the process we've been using in the past, and look forward to a busy year.
Other questions or comments, excuse me, from board members? I'd just like to say thank you. This is, this document is critical for what we do as a district, and we've spent a lot of time in the last year and a half with COVID, taking over a lot of our discussions and that. And I look forward to starting our committee of the wholes again, which we have our first one this month, so we can actually really dig into the work that's happening on behalf of students in this district. So I'd like a motion and a second to approve the work plans for the 2021-2022 school year as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Dr. Yoboah. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Dr. Yoboah?
Yes.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Blatter?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so motions passed. Onto oral reports, our COVID-19 data report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, thank you. So the board at the last meeting requested an update at each board meeting on our COVID-19 data, and so we're going to walk you through what we've captured, certainly answer any questions that you have, and certainly entertain any thoughts that you have, if there are any aspects of this monitoring data that you'd like to have adjusted either for the board and/or for the, the community. So I just want to, want to start, probably most relevant to the work that we do are the actual cases that we're seeing inside of our schools. And again, actually, I'll step back to the title slide and just reminding you that our goal, stated goal, both last year, all through the year, and continuing into this year, is to make sure that we get students into school and keep them there, right? We know that we keep them there through a safe experience when, when they're there. So that goal has not changed. What we've seen in terms of data or activity, small chart, and so I'm going to call your attention to the, the far right of this chart, captures our first two and a half weeks of, of school, so 8:27 being our first week, 9:03 being our second week, and then actually that third chart that you see is just the update where we are as of noon today. So halfway through our third week, we've had 12 positive cases this week on the student side, three on the staff side. And again, this chart does give you the historical all the way back through the beginning of this calendar year. Our peak in terms of student cases in a single week actually came back in November of 2020, when I think we hit a peak of 56 cases in a, in a single week. But again, just for the purpose of this chart, we're capturing that data back to the beginning of this calendar year. Cases per 100,000, something you're going to see us come back to when we do talk a little bit about another tool that we want to, want to try to bring a little bit of additional clarity and understanding, becomes very important. Again, you, you see where we sit as of, as of today, both in, in terms of that, we, we hit a little bit of a, of a peak the last couple of days. It's come down a little bit, but is hovering right around the, the same number where we are, which is about 200 cases per 100,000. Our cadence last year in terms of updating our dashboard was that we update our, updated our dashboard on a weekly basis. We did that through all of last year. Again, we provide direct notification to an elementary classroom of a case, all other case activity we've been monitoring on this dashboard, again, on a, on a weekly basis. And so you see same information that you saw reflected on that first chart, just broken out in chart form with all buildings represented. And again, this information for the prior week is always updated by Wednesday of the week, both for student and staff cases. Quarantine information, that was our, that is our challenge since the, the start of the, of the school year. We are currently, as of today, at noon, at 95 students that are quarantined. 50 of those are a result of in-school, close contacts, and what that means is that the other 45 quarantine cases are not as a result of, of an in-school issue, it's a result of a close contact outside of school. Our staff, as we become aware of a case, does assist in contact tracing for in-school, close contacts, and so you see where we are as of today. We did have a, a pretty substantial group of students that returned this week off of quarantine, I believe as of this morning. We've got 81 students that have returned from quarantine. So at some point this year, we're on quarantine and have now returned as a result of a, of an in-school, close contact.
Jeff, can I ask a question on that?
You sure can.
So in our dashboard today, we had several schools that had zero cases, but we had a quarantine numbers.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean those numbers would be from outside?
Outside, so it could have been a quarantine as a result of perhaps a sibling, family member situation, an outside-of-school activity that wouldn't be reflected directly on our dashboard as a case.
Right, so when you see a zero in a, in a positive case number and a different quarantine number, that's going to be something that we don't control?
Very likely.
Or doesn't, doesn't necessarily happen in our schools.
Very likely.
Okay.
Vaccination update, and again, I'll, I'll highlight that this is approximate as, as I fed out of the Illinois Department of Public Health database, so they have data identified by ZIP code. Does not necessarily mean all students within that age group are in a District 200 school, so this could account for some students that are either at home or perhaps in a, in a private school, but still reside within the, the ZIP code. So we've been updating that weekly. Again, just as a reminder, what we report to the board is partial vaccinated status. Reason for that is it's just as you're tracking over time, you will see a natural uptick as we've worked with the, the health department. They've identified this as an important statistic to monitor because of the likelihood that once a student has received at least the first dose of vaccine, they do typically get the second one. There obviously can be some individual cases where that's not true, but, but not likely. So again, you see at the middle school level that we are at about 48%. That is of all of our middle school students, so that is accounting for the grade level of students that are not eligible for vaccination are included in that number. And then at the high school level, we're about 74%. Outbreak and investigation, so just a reminder that the Illinois Department of Public Health does indicate that an outbreak investigation needs to be done anytime you have two cases that are potentially linked epidemiologically. And so whenever we have two cases inside of a, of a building, we do, again, look deeply at if there's any potential relationship of those cases inside of our building. We look at placement of students, both at lunch, on bus, in any of the areas within our building. And so, again, I, I note this just to, to indicate, as you look at the number, we have done 17 investigations of cases inside of our school, where we've had multiple cases at, actually at 11. We've done 17 investigations at 11 different schools and have still not found evidence of outbreak or related transmission. And then the final thing that I do want to, want to go through, there was certainly some comment on this earlier, we've talked about it with the board. I just want to establish a little bit of background around the MIT tool. And again, very clearly, there's no decision point in front of the board tonight, there's not at this point in time, but back in the summer. So again, I think what you heard from, from Mrs. Crabtree is the acknowledgement that at the first point of guidance this summer, very clearly, we were given the directive from the health department, or direction from the health department, that they weren't advising specifically on plans. They recognized the, the local control piece. And so understanding in the summer that this was likely to come to school districts at some point, we continued to look at this tool from MIT that's called a COVID-19 indoor safety guideline tool because we want to make sure that as we bring any information to the board, whether it was at the point in the summer, any point moving forward, that there is science behind the work that, that we're doing. And so just want to walk you through a couple of the pieces of background information, again, to, to start to build some of that. All right, so acknowledged in the MIT tool is that when you're looking, especially at public health, physics does play a role, especially in a respiratory, respiratory disease like COVID-19. Actually, the science of physics is important in how you look at and how you evaluate this. So this tool from MIT was initially released in December of 2020. It was peer-reviewed in April of 2021, before it was published by the National Institutes of Health. What does the tool do? So this COVID-19 tool looks at the physi, at the physics of respiratory droplets and aerosols, looks certainly at immunology related to COVID-19, including any of the variants as they've come out. It has studied or looked at actual spreader events from COVID-19, so it's looked at actual situations where the virus is spread to, to build that into the model. And then there are a number of data points that we enter that we're going to go through to kind of help you understand how this works. Central to the model is local public health data, so the actual virus activity that we're seeing within our county or immediate area. It does take into account, as I mentioned earlier, the variants, and specifically what it is that we're learning about the variants and the way that they're impacting any transmission of the virus. Some of the local elements that get added in to the tool is that it looks very specifically at all of our instructional spaces, the square feet, square footage of any of our classrooms or area that students or staff occupy. It looks at ceiling height, it looks very specifically at our HVAC systems, and the number of air exchanges every hour that we see inside. number of air exchanges every hour that we see inside of each space, something that we've actually studied for every space within the district, looks at humidity and that impact on on the the activity of the virus, and it looks at filtration across our systems. What are we currently using on our systems? Looks at some human factors, how many people are actually occupying that space, the age of the individuals that are occupying that space, what are they doing inside of that area? Are they just sitting quietly? Are they exercising? Are they speaking? Are they singing? All activities that that do impact how the the virus is potentially transmitted. It does, of course, look at mitigations, are individuals masked inside of the that space? And then there's an area where you can actually enter a risk tolerance into to that. Risk tolerance, simply meeting is the the goal to avoid any transmission inside of the space. That would be the most conservative of risk tolerance, and then you can adjust it if you want to adjust it from there. It looks at, as I mentioned, immunology, so both your your vaccination rates and any projections you have on those that may have natural immunity inside of the space. And ultimately, the output of the tool, what it kicks out based on all of these data points that are entered, is an output that says this individual space could safely hold X number of people for X amount of time, right, without risk of the 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 virus spread. Acknowledged, and I do want to share this, this is a theoretical model, right, but so is a lot of public health, especially as you begin to talk about tools that help you to make decisions moving forward. So last year through last year, as the DuPage County Health Department shared a a model or a framework, giving guidance on how schools operate, at what point should you be remote versus having students inside of the building, they're using a theoretical model to arrive at ultimately that that recommendation. And so again, I I fully acknowledge that there are elements of this that are that are theoretical, but again, we've looked at over time this tool as a part of a multi-data protocol. And and as Mrs. Crabtree mentioned earlier, as we've talked to the health department about this, it it's a tool that they just don't have familiarity with, but it's not that they are not interested in learning more or or beginning to understand how perhaps in the long term, this is a tool that could be safe and so or could be potentially used. And so last year, at at every point in our adjustment to to plans, we did run the COVID mitigation tool on top of our programs to ultimately identify what was the lowest point last year that we actually had students inside of our buildings, what was that lowest output within the the MIT tool? And so what what I will tell you as you see this last chart, that the lowest point we came to last year was an eighteen-hour output within the the tool, right? Again, it's a theoretical model, so I I don't have a specific way of identifying what might be the floor that that you may want to look at. So again, just sharing through last year, right, as we navigated through transition and adjustments, what did we actually see in the lowest threshold we came to was eighteen hours? And so again, through this year, right now, not specifically tied to a decision point that we're making, but every week, we've continued to update, look at what the model is telling us in terms of where we are based on mitigations and and where we sit. And we do continue to sit above that eighteen-hour threshold right now at all three levels. And again, we've looked at it by level because again, as you saw earlier within the chart, immunology very different based on age level of the the students in in our school buildings. So again, the the board, I know, is aware of, we've shared the fact that this is a tool that we've looked at certainly in the background in terms of our decisions, and I just wanted to bring a little bit of clarification again around what it is. So the first seven or eight slides in this presentation are those weekly data points that we're monitoring for you, actually daily data points that we're monitoring for you, but I wanted to begin to build some understanding around this MIT tool and and again, share with you that Dr. Ozymkowski has spent quite a bit of time actually studying and learning about about this MIT tool. And again, it has been solely based on the desire to be prepared in the event that, right, we have a have an opportunity to bring some data-informed decisions to the board. So that is all that I've got on your your COVID updates for tonight, so like go back to really your first seven or eight slides. Any questions, concerns about the the data points?
I have a couple. Do we do you have a sense roughly, and I'm sorry, I should have sent you this question earlier so you could look it up, how many students are opted into the shield testing?
Yeah, I don't want to I don't want to quote the wrong information.
Yeah.
For you, I will absolutely get that for you. It's information that that we can share, I just don't want to speculate.
Great, no, great, I apologize that I didn't send that to you earlier for you to have. For the new cases, I guess any of the cases, I mean, I know we've only been in school a few weeks, but have any of those cases been found through the shield testing?
No.
No, okay. Um, hang on, I have another one. Is it possible with the vaccination data to get a sense of the at the middle school level, what the vaccination rate for those who are eligible? Because I believe you said this includes those that are not eligible, correct?
Yeah, I could, yeah, certainly, we could do that.
Okay, and then I'm also wondering if through, because this is through, this is not through our like self-reporting, correct?
Correct, no, this is through actual data in the state system.
In the state system, okay. Do we have a sense, does this align with what is being self-reported by parents?
I'd have to get that for you.
Okay. And I know that not everybody is going to report, you know, who could. And then I just want to say, you know, I appreciate all the additional information on the MIT tool. I think I I remember very clearly, you know, especially last year, getting many, 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 many emails telling us, think out of the box, find, find a new way, think out of the box. And I appreciate you looking into this tool and your team looking into this tool. And and I and I know you that if we find, you know, if the health department, IDPH, whoever, finds that, you know what, this tool isn't what we thought, isn't as great as we thought it was, isn't as accurate as we thought it was, we will admit that and we will move on. And but as of now, we're, as you mentioned, it's one of our data points that we're using across multiple things. And I appreciate you looking into that and putting the thought and study behind it before using a tool as part of your evaluation process. So thank you very much for the data.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Paulson?
Sure. I just want to clarify what I think you talked about in the presentation. So I think this is the same thing we did last year. So when there's a case in a school, the the students in that classroom, the parents get notified of the positive case like that day? Like it's directly from the school to those parents that are in that classroom?
At the elementary level.
The elementary level. And how does that happen at the middle school and high school?
Middle school, high school, we we only report the the aggregate data for the school.
So that, so is there communication from the school? So at the high school, I know last year there was communication often when there was a situation.
We did at the early in the year, we were communicating every case from the high school and the middle school in a separate letter. It was actually through requests of of parents saying that that just too much trying to to track that. It was actually a request to move to a weekly reporting, right, directly from from parents. That's how we made that that adjustment, and we did that about midway through the year.
Okay. And then the the COVID dashboard, I think it's just like last year, so the dashboard goes live on Wednesday, representing the data from the prior week, because we have to wait through the weekend or a couple of days until taste tests come, test results come back? Is that is that the correct reason for the?
We want to make sure that the data that we're putting up there was was accurate. So our our internal monitoring tools and our dashboard is is certainly enhanced this year over where it was last year. I believe we could accelerate that timeline a little bit earlier in the 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 week this year. And to be honest, we we can up the cadence of that as well. As I talked with, shared with a number of our our colleagues around, there are districts that don't have a dashboard, there are districts that have a dashboard that monitor weekly, there are some districts that have a dashboard and they're monitoring daily. We we have the ability to update that that cadence to kind of whatever the the need happens to to be. You've had a lot more requests at the beginning of this year to up that monitor, up the cadence of the dashboard more frequently. We we can certainly do that. It's not a question of us not wanting to be transparent or open with the information. We were following the same cadence that we had through all of last year and and what we chose to do this year. We did add this year, just as in my last year, we were reporting the cases in the aggregate by level. We have broken it out by specific building this year to to give even a a deeper level of breakdown than what was there last year. But again, we can update, we can up that cadence, that is not an issue.
So one thing that I'd like to look into is the quarantine numbers, and we talked about it earlier, I think it's really important to differentiate those students who are quarantined because of a close contact in school or on the bus versus out-of-school activities. If there's a way to to separate that data point on the dashboard, I think that would be useful information. And then that's just deals about that. And then the second thing is we, you know, I I had heard a rumor, so we we heard last time that the DuPage County Health Department has not accepted the test-to-stay option for unvaccinated students, and they're working through this, and it sounds like they're they're close to allowing us to do that. I had heard a rumor, I don't know if it's true, that the health, DuPage County Health Department was the only one in the state who hadn't yet adopted that? Is that bad information that I received?
Yeah, I I could not speak to the entire state.
Okay.
Because I wouldn't want to potentially misrepresent the answer. I can speak to our immediate area, and yes, I believe that is true certainly in our immediate area.
Chicago land area, okay.
Yep.
But we're in conversation with them, and we we anticipate that that option will come back, and so that's kind of the objective, having that tool so that we don't have to have students quarantined, we can keep them in school. That's our first objective.
Correct.
That's all I have.
Other questions or comments?
I'm following up on Brad. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
With the with the test-to-stay, I think that you had mentioned, and I know it's not in place yet, that students who were exposed outside of school would not be eligible for test-to-stay? And is there, what's the reasoning for that?
So I don't don't know specifically, but I do know that even in the IDPH, and statewide, it it speaks directly to the in-school close contacts. I think in general, they're viewed as lower-risk close contacts than outside of school where I think it's a little more difficult to actually account for timing proximity of of students. I think the other piece is that a lot of the out-of-school close contacts are actually tied to to those residing in a home, like within very close proximity to each other, which I think is a is a different scenario. So it, when test-to-stay does come into play, what it's going to address are the in-school close contacts. So right now, on that chart, you know, we have fifty students that are in-school close contacts or out. Those are situations are quarantines that we would be able to avoid.
Okay, thank you. And has there been any discussion, maybe like Chris and Dave went with you about offering the same benefits for non-vaccinated students who have natural immunity, like proven natural immunity, or no?
Yeah, so actually, if you, if if a student does, does have a test result within the last ninety days, then they do not quarantine.
But past ninety days?
Right now, I have not heard any discussion about it longer than ninety days.
Okay, just I think that, or, so that opens it up to the under twelve age to the ninety-day window?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so just off of the, I have heard feedback from teachers and parents. I think the kids in quarantine initially, the first two weeks, it was a little bumpy. Do we have the structure in place now for teachers that they know what the expectations are?
I I believe that certainly we do. I think with any transition we made last year, I do, I just want to remind the board, every transition we made was a bit bumpy, right? As we did something different for the the first time, it it took a little while for that procedure to to be fully ironed out. I believe we do. If we continue to hear that the supports are not adequate, we will certainly continue to make adjustments to to make sure we're addressing the needs of students.
And the principals are responsible for relaying that to the staff and teachers?
They are.
And then also to a student as they become quarantined?
They are.
And so is it, is it accurate to say that at this point with the distancing that we have for lunch, that really only close contact would occur on the bus?
Should be primarily bus unless you had a a unique situation perhaps inside of a school, right? A unique situation where perhaps, you know, by by choice and like a like a recess situation or or whatnot, you had a had an unusual close contact, I would say, I think that's an accurate statement, that they'll probably be tied to bus issues.
I think that's all, so, thank you.
Mr. Long?
Yeah, just one question. Can you explain the rationale behind the dashboard talking about the maximum number of students quarantined in a day, you know, versus just the the raw number?
Well, so because we were reporting it weekly, I I think through last year, what we found is that we were trying to communicate what is the day out of the week where we had the largest number of students that were quarantined. So at at any point in time, right, David, is we report data over, let's say, a a two-week period of time, right? There's a number of students that are quarantined every day, there are always some duplicate situations, right? So every every day, you potentially have a student that wasn't quarantined that becomes quarantined, and then a student that comes off of quarantine and returns to to school. And so I I guess candidly, trying to report a raw number, I'm not exactly sure what that would look like and that it would be actually any more reflective of what is the highest point in the year. So we actually felt being transparent that communicating what was the the worst day out of the week in terms of raw numbers was the best way to appropriately communicate information to to families.
Yeah, and I I agree with it. I'm actually just asking the question because of some of the emails that seem to indicate that the reporting it this way is a lack of transparency. I agree with you, you're reporting the high data point for the week, so that does make sense to me, but I just wanted to get that out.
And again, that that was that was our approach through last year. That's how we communicated any of the information through last year.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I go?
I just want to agree with Brad. I had written down the same thing, like, is it beneficial to break down the kids who are in quarantine as a result of in-school close contact versus out of school? I think that may offer some information as we're really heading into not anticipating a lot of quarantine if it's bus-only, may be helpful.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that for you guys.
Yeah, just one more clarification, too. So just to make sure I'm clear, our job as a school district is when we get a positive case, is to determine in the school who those close contacts are? And then we report that to the health department, and then the health department does the contact tracing? So the school doesn't do the contact tracing?
Yeah, we we are doing the contact tracing investigation. The actual quarantine is happening through the health department.
Okay.
Okay, I have just a couple of questions. We we had a few people tonight, and I know we've received a couple of emails, I would say we've probably had less than ten, that have asked us to update our numbers more than we're doing it once a week. Is there a way we can find out if 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 people, like, like, what's the time commitment if we were to go to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or that? Is that a huge staff take on? Or that, is that a huge staff take on having to, to do that? Is our staff, is that going to require a lot of staff time to do that? I guess I want to find out, do people really want that information? We've only heard from just a small handful of people. So, just something for us to be, something for us to be thinking about. I want us to think ahead in the next month or so to volunteers. And, and as I look at this data, you know, we have Halloween coming up, Halloween parties in school, volunteers coming in school, PTA events. Parents are in school for sometimes in classrooms more than 15 minutes. Are we requiring vaccination status? Are we, what is the, I'm not asking for any answer tonight. I'd just like us to be thinking about, maybe for our next board meeting, how are we handling all of that?
Yeah, I will give you just what, what piece of information I can share with you immediately. And I think some of that is still getting clarified. Of course, the, both the State Board of Education and even at the local level, they have clarified, clarified a difference between a volunteer that is in a school regularly, meaning a cadence of like at least once a week for a period that exceeds 15 minutes, and that being different from a visitor, somebody that is, is there for a one-time purpose and is clearly able to maintain distance even if they happen to be inside of a classroom. So, it's still, still to, to get clarified, but that is something that's on the radar to bring clarity to. It has some impact even on like volunteer coaches at the secondary level and a number of other programs that actually do rely on folks from outside of the, of the district to come in.
So, I'm even thinking of us, you know, I know Mr. Hanlon and I go into buildings, you know, for teaching and learning. We, we sometimes hire in people who come in and do maybe a multi-day in-classroom assembly kinds of things. And that if we need to, just be thinking, at least be thinking about that. So. Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
I have one, and you reminded me. I apologize. I, there was a seminar, a webinar by our legal counsel, Robin Schwartz, on the vaccine mandate and that I, I sat in on. And one of the things that I asked the question in the Q and A and several other people were asking it, is if board members fall under that vaccine mandate and, or the vaccine or testing, you know, weekly mandate? And their response was that if we're just meeting once a month for our business meeting, maybe not. But if we are in the schools, then yes, then we most likely fall under that mandate. And I, we have a program, I guess, I'm not sure what word to use, that amongst our Board of Adopted Schools, where we each get three or four schools that we are in contact with throughout the year to our ability based on our, our occupations and time during the day. And because of that, I, there is an expectation that we are in the schools, you know, with our adopted schools. And so, and again, it doesn't have to be now, but you know, maybe next meeting. I just want to be open and transparent as we're hearing from our community that if we are going to be in our schools as part of our, part of our adopted school program, that we as board members are participating, or I shouldn't say, are following the vaccine man, vaccine mandate or testing protocol to be inside of our schools.
Anybody else, questions?
So you're saying that our attorney suggested we would have to follow that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd want to have more information on that before we make any decisions or any guidance. I just want to know more about it, right? Because there's difference between a point of view and what we want a mandate for a board. So.
Correct. No, no, and that wasn't, yeah, no, and that was directly from the, the attorney webinar. That's not me being like, we should do that. Yeah, so.
I understand.
I'm just sharing the information.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, we're going to move on now to written reports. The monthly financial report, FOIA report, teacher administration and IMRF compensation reports, board communication log, reports from other board members. Posted were the committee notes from the Board Finance Committee, Social Emotional Learning Committee, Human Resources Policy Committee were attached. Is there any other information, Dr. Schuler, in regards to that?
No additional information on the committee reports that are attached.
Okay. Other reports from board members?
I have one comment that I should have made under board communication log. I just wanted, I've just observed all the emails over the past couple of months and really over the last year. I just want to remind our public that if you send an email to the school board, it's public record and anything can be FOIA'd. Anybody can ask for that information and get that information shared. So, you know, some of the emails we get are a little bit borderline, or quite a bit borderline. And I just, you know, we, we use a rule at work that if you don't want it on 60 Minutes or on USA Today headlines, don't send it. And I just share that point of perspective to our, to our community.
Any other reports from board members?
I do. I would like to address a couple of things that have come across our email last year, actually. First, so I want to, I want to address, if I can, I want to add a few dates to your timeline that you spoke about in the beginning. Just to, again, be open and transparent on how decisions are made by the board, that our meeting was on July 14th. As Mrs. Grabtree said, at that time, we were, and I remember looking this up, our transmission rate was about 1%, maybe a teeny bit over. And our cases for 100,000 were 20 within our zip code. It was on July 16th, I'm sorry, yeah, July 16th that the American Academy of Pediatrics released their recommendation. And then, what I want to share with our community is that on, it was late on July 28th that I believe Dr. O'Keefe received information from our, from our insurance group on their recommendation on a masking situation and the issue in schools that was shared with Dr. Schuler early on the morning of July 29th, and then which he immediately forwarded to the board. And then on July 30th was a webinar by our legal counsel on the, the mask issue and what that mean, what that meant at that time with the way that the CDC and IDPH guidance was written. And then it was on August 4th that the governor put the mandate out. So, I'm just, I'm just adding those dates so people understand that this was a very complex issue that had a lot of pieces that we needed to fully understand before any potential change could have been made to the plan. That we didn't have all that information, at least from our insurance, our insurers and our legal counsel, until July 30th. So, I just wanted to add those dates. And then that's when we made plans to have another meeting on August 11th that did not occur because of the mandate coming through.
We made that decision on August 3rd, just to clarify, that we wrote the letter for the community.
Right. Yep. But that's when you started gathering dates for when board members were available to have a meeting. So. Okay. So, here's what I want to, want to address tonight. And I, I brought snacks because I'm going to be talking for a few minutes, so enjoy your snacks. Like I said, we've been getting a lot of emails. And I just wanted to address some things that I feel like our community is feeling that we are not being transparent about or open about. And so, I just, I just wanted to hit some of these things head on and move on. I want to start by saying I take my role as a non-partisan school member very seriously. I try extremely hard not to reveal or have my decisions informed by any political beliefs when I sit in this seat. The only side I will ever be on is the side of our students. However, for those who know me personally, it is not a secret that I am politically active outside of my board role. Tonight, I'm going to address some things that may require me to dabble around the partisan line. And for that, I apologize, but I feel that it's necessary. Over the past year, we have received a number of emails directly attacking Dr. Schuler's assumed political affiliations with particular individuals from our community and how those supposed relations, supposed relationships impact his decision-making. I'm going to cash in some chips tonight, so to speak, with my progressive friends and share two things that I feel should be known about Dr. Schuler from my experience with working with him over the years. First, I have worked closely with Dr. Schuler for two years now on the school board, and I also knew him during my work on the 2017 referendum. And Dr. Schuler may not know this, but I actually was part of the interview process as part of the parent group that the district brought together during your hiring process when the final two candidates were in consideration. And for the record, I did choose you. For the hundreds of conversations, emails and texts I've had with Dr. Schuler, I can honestly say that I have absolutely no idea where he stands politically, not a clue. And that is exactly how it should be, not in relation to, not just in relation to me being a board member, but also as the leader of our school district that our children attend. He might hold views that are in direct opposition of mine, but I honestly don't know and I honestly don't care. The only thing I care about is that he separates any political views from his work. And I can tell you that is the only type of leadership I have seen from him. Number two, while there are times that I have disagreed with Dr. Schuler, I can say unequivocally, without a shadow of a doubt, that Dr. Schuler's sole goal and intention, from the decision he makes to the events he participates in, is to better our school community, provide relevant factual information, and most importantly, provide the best education experience possible for our students. I can also say that he is available to all parents and community members who wish to reach out. I've seen it time and time and time again. Lastly, Dr. Schuler is an employee of the board. I also take that responsibility very, very seriously. As a member of the board that employs him, and I want to stress very much so that I speak solely for myself here, I cannot let blame rest on his shoulders for something that we, and therefore I, let happen. I'm not going to bring life back to something that happened over a year ago, but I want to publicly own a decision I made where I failed in my duties as a school board member, a failure I directly communicated to Dr. Schuler at the time. As I worked so hard to stay non-partisan, to keep my politics out of my decisions, I failed to actually do my job and keep him out of a local town hall that I initially did not see as a political situation, but a place where he clearly was only trying to be a voice of reason and knowledge in a field in which he's an expert during a very tumultuous time in education with a candidate who is well-known to be inherently against public education. I have no doubt, none whatsoever, that was his only intention in agreeing to participate. If the community is looking to place blame for that event, then place it on us, the board. Please keep Dr. Schuler out of it and let him do the job for which we entrust him to do. All of this is to say to our community, the false narrative of political motivation by our superintendent must stop, and it must stop now. As someone who's politically engaged and active, it's very disheartening to see all sides creating this false narrative. As someone who cares very deeply about keeping public education non-partisan, a subject I have spoken out about in the past, and as someone who was elected, I believe, because of my thoughtfulness and thoroughness and care for the truth, I can tell you from my front row seat that partisan politics are not at play when it comes to decisions made regarding the education, health and safety of our students. While we have gotten very good at posting our rants on social media, and again, I can't say this enough and I mean all sides, we have forgotten how to have conversations and how to have questions, how to ask questions and seek answers. This is not what we strive to teach our kids in our schools, and I urge us all to do better and to give great and careful thought to the voices that we are choosing to elevate in this community. Finally, I would like to remind the community that this is a business meeting for the governing body of a school district. This is not theater. My decision to comment or not comment on my fellow board members' opinions is a result of deciding what to give air to and what to not. It doesn't matter, I'm sorry, it doesn't mean I agree or disagree. It means I'm using care and thought to decide if I believe the community will benefit from continuing a conversation. All seven of us were duly elected by this community, and we can disagree. But we also respect that we have, that we each have a voice that this community chose to have on this board. And if and when we choose to challenge each other, it will be respectful and purposeful and with merit. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Are there any other reports from board members?
I got a couple of things. Just, you know, it's nice that we're back at school. With that comes a little bit of normalcy. I'll, you know, Jenna liked how I always had my little index card. I'll point out it's purple this time, not blue, but a lot of things this month. DCHD, the DuPage County Health Department, I appreciated that opportunity to, to have that feedback and get to know those people a little bit and what they're challenged with. The Jefferson Playground dedication, it was nice to see the, the community and a lot of support that we get from a lot of donors. Football, my wife runs concessions at Wheat North, so I get to help her run concessions. So, while I'd like to watch the game, it's fun to be back there with a bunch of people wearing masks and serving food and having a good time. I continue to, participate is probably a strong word, but the DEI Advisory Council, I continue to attend those on my quest to listen, learn and understand different perspectives related to the topic of diversity, equity and inclusion. You know, we got an email yesterday from a parent about lauding a teacher for significant positive influence he had on his student. And that's the email I'm going to remember the most for the last couple of months. And I'd like to just thank that parent for sharing such a positive message. It couldn't probably come at a better time. And personally, I appreciate all the community's support as I've been out in the community. You know, I, I made some comments last month, some heartfelt comments. And I know people that disagreed with me that gave me encouragement. And I just appreciate the support and that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Yeah, we are, as Susan said, we have adopted schools. So, I had a chance to go to South this week, or last week. And having, you know, you and I have visited a lot of schools and we've seen various stages of, of what teaching looks like, whether it's hybrid, whether it, you know, remote, the whole thing. And what a pleasure it was to be in a school, to see a full classroom, to see a teacher teaching, a science teacher teaching a lab. And it was fantastic. Everybody was participating, everybody was engaged. It was just normalcy. It was great. To see kids passing in the hallway to meet some new teachers, like the new band teacher at South, just fantastic stuff. Scott's doing, Scott McDermott's doing a great job over there. Really, it's his first full year, and so really great work going over there. And then one, one last thing that I just want to comment on, which is when our students come and talk at the board meeting and share their thoughts, that's always such a bright light, right? It's, it's awesome to see our students engaged and talking and sharing their opinions, whatever they are. And one student who spoke tonight, Ethan, he's been to multiple board meetings, not just tonight. He's been to at least three or four of the last board meetings. We see him in the audience. And that level of engagement is impressive, and I just want to recognize it and just say thanks. And I wish more students would come and participate. It's just a, it's a great thing to see. So, thank you.
Anybody else? I just want to bring up that in November is the Triple I Conference. And at that time, we, there is a delegate assembly that is held. And every school district has an opportunity to have a delegate attend on our behalf. And so, I know Mrs. Booton has reached out that she is willing to do that. I don't know if anybody else is interested in, in, in doing that or not?
I second that.
Three in a row.
Okay. Mrs. Booton, you will be our, you will be our representative at the delegate assembly. But I have to say, when I did it one time, the gentleman that was sitting next to me was celebrating 50 years of serving on a school board. Unfortunately, he just passed away recently.
Oh, no.
50 years. I thought that was...
Hey, Chris, can I provide some clarity on that for our community?
Hey, Chris, can I provide some clarity on that for our community? So what Susan provides a vote for, for our district will come to our board. Several discussion in advance of proposed resolutions that have been developed by member school districts, school boards from across the state. So there will be a recommendation that comes from the delegate committee. Whether it's a yes recommendation to support the resolution or a no recommendation to not support it. So we will have a conversation or two at this table, once those draft resolutions come to, in front of us. And we will have a discussion that directs Mrs. Booton on how we want to vote as a board. So there's a process here that we, we will get involved in soon.
Yeah, we'll probably have two conversations. We'll probably have it for October meeting. And if I remember correctly, it went into two because we had Mrs. Booton even do a little bit of research prior to last year and so that we were able to make informed votes.
And probably the most important thing that I just realized I didn't say is that, that informs or directs the Illinois Association of School Boards how to advocate to this government in Springfield, Springfield to represent the interests of this member school districts. So that's really the end goal, is giving our vote to how we want that group to advocate.
Okay, topics for future discussion. Anybody have anything they would like to have added? Okay, our next regular board meeting is October 13th, 7:00 PM here. Under announcements, we do have committee of the whole. I'm very excited. We're starting those again on September 22nd, also 7:00 PM here. Public comments, the same guidelines apply as I previously stated. We have three public comments. The first is Ron McGowan.
Again, I'm Ron, a District 200 resident and a dad of three district students, and I am not a critical race scholar, nor am I attempting to present myself as one. Last month, I attended a parent orientation where a parent asked the school leadership what steps they were taking regarding diversity and inclusion, especially for racialized minority students facing or feeling safe and included in the school. The principal answered, their answer needed work, but a parent behind me called out, "Are you teaching CRT?" With a confused look, the principal answered correctly, "No." The parent responded, "Well, if you start teaching CRT, will you tell us?" The principal replied, "The board sets the curriculum." I bring this up tonight because I know that District 200 is not teaching critical race theory because critical race theory is a legal movement that explores how US laws based on race have affected social realities. And for all of my study, District 200 does not teach US law. Now, after reviewing the discipline disproportionality data, I know why this parent asked the question about racialized minority students feeling safe in the school. And this is something that we do need to talk about and that I care deeply about. But tonight, my question for you is this. Why are so many confusing critical race theory with culturally responsive teaching and learning? Why has critical race theory become a boogeyman to scare people with? So I invite you into two things. One, pursue intellectual integrity. Read critical race theory scholars and their primary documents to know what they actually say. Two, pursue the truth. If a person warning you about critical race theory can't tell you who Derrick Bell or Richard Delgado are or how critical race theory relates to law or its relationship to the civil rights movement, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Justin Khan.
Hi, I'm Justin Khan. I have a student currently in the district. And first, as an aside, I know that you stated early that there would be no applause and apparently those chose to ignore this. In future, since many of us did choose to respect this, I would appreciate it if you would go ahead and either censure them or hold a recess until they can decide that they're not going to do it anymore. Onto the CRT question. As Ronnie already said, CRT is generally taught in second-year law school. This is something that we are not expecting kids from elementary all the way through high school to know. However, basic history should be taught. I mean, for those people who are worried or concerned that America is not the great country and we're not going to teach that, well, we're not. Look at the Tulsa Race massacre, massacre and about a dozen, two dozen other race riots or purges or pogroms, as you want to call them, against Chinese, Hispanics and black people, people of color. Look at what was done to the Native Americans. We are not the greatest country in the world and some people don't want that history taught. And this needs to be revised in our curriculum, what has actually happened. This is why civil rights are important, why they were important all the way back in the 60s, why they're still important today, because these haven't all been addressed yet. Thank you.
And last is Allison Williams.
I didn't get to finish what I was saying earlier, so I just want to make one more comment and address a few comments that were made tonight and then something that Mr. Long had said at the last board meeting. Many people are mentioning that they felt like they were following the expert advice by going mask optional. And I just want to clarify to everyone that absolutely no public health institution ever came out and said it was unsafe for unvaccinated groups of children to gather indoors without masks. That was never anything that any reputable health institution ever said was a good idea. It's very well-known that masks optional policies are negligent to unvaccinated students as well as staff and community.
Okay. We're moving on to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park recreational or educational setting or specific volunteers of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, specific employee who serves as an independent contractor in a park recreational or educational setting or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. 5 ILCS 122, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1. I ask for a, I move and ask for a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, was that Mrs. Booton?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Hutchinson, can you please call the roll? Yes.
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 There is no action expected following the closed session.